Okay, it is 5:25 on October 28th. I'm calling to order the Education Operations Committee meeting of the Wausau School District. This is agendized to follow the special meeting which concluded just a couple of minutes ago.
Is this a good place to stand?
Yeah, that'll be fine.
So.
Is this it?
I've been having similar things happen to me tonight. So, the first thing that I would like to do is I'm seeking a motion to approve the minutes of September 23rd, 2019. All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries? Minutes are approved. Alright, next, public and student comments. Alright. There is no public or student comment tonight. So then we will move on to Agenda item number four, Summer Learning Program Report. Dr. Phelps, Deb, Nancy, hi there. You'll be presenting some highlights for us.
Alright, thanks for having us tonight. As you can see, we are not going to be taking, the adults are not going to be taking too much of this presentation as we have some great guests here to talk about our amazing summer learning opportunities. We do want to share a couple of highlights before we get to our students, just to give you a little bit of what went on this summer in the high school. One of the highlights was integrating our all-Taihi students into our high school for the first time and successfully doing that over at Wausau West. In the middle school, we had many volunteer opportunities for our classes, so we had over 80 hours of volunteering every day in many other areas. I'll hand it over to Deb to talk a little bit about elementary highlights.
So, our elementary programs continue to be strong this year. We follow the same framework we have in the past couple of years. In our morning sessions, which are our core summer learning sessions, between that and then our Week 7 in our academy classes, we had almost 2,000 programs accessed by our students, which we were really excited about. We continue some really strong partnerships and we are working hard to grow those as well. We've been lucky enough to pair up with the Wausau Police Department at our 4K program and bring Safety City to all of our 4K students in summer learning, which has been a great partnership. We continue to work closely with Blessings in a Backpack to make sure that our students who need that support during the school year receive that in the summer as well. And then we continue, our second grade program invites guest speakers from throughout our community in, and this year we were able to provide busing from all of our sites to the Boys and Girls Club for our students. So, some things we're really proud of with our community partners.
And I'm Nancy and I'll talk a little bit about Community Connection. Next summer, Community Connection will be 10 years old, so I was pretty excited when I realized that, looking back at things today. We stay pretty consistent because we don't have a lot of growth opportunity in Community Connection because it's sort of up to the community partners in terms of how many we can handle. So, we would normally have about 300 students. So, we have continued excellent partnerships. The Police Department and Safe Kids Aspiras also came and did bike rodeos in the afternoon, but you'll get to hear all about what we get to do later when Jimmy Peck comes up. So, yeah.
Just a little overview of our Week 7. Week 7 is our extension to try and provide more students more to do in the summer. So this year, we took advantage of that week. We added a full day to our saunters and stretchers programs. The younger students only came for a half day in the past, so we expanded that to a full day. And our World Language program was so popular that we were able to add a second session of that as well. So, kids are always looking for more to do in the summer and we continue to try and fill that need for them. And then Rob, if you want to mention the academies.
Our academy model started three years ago. That is our 3rd, 4th, 5th, and some 6th graders. That was our afternoon enrichment activities that we offer our students. And so, we started with STEM three years ago. We added art and world languages two years ago, and then this past summer, we added music. All very successful programs. We also gave out a survey to our families at the end of the summer, and as you can see with this, a lot of green and blue on there, a lot of children and parents and families very satisfied and satisfied with our programs. But with that said, you're not here to listen to us, so we have some presenters.
I do have a question, Dr. Phelps.
Go ahead.
Eddie, I wanted to sneak this question in with you, Deb. Back to the Week 7. What is the one, because I know that you added the World Language section, but there is the program over at, what is it, Camp Sturbinon?
Sturbinon.
Okay. And that one is very popular also.
Yep.
And is that one not an option to add anything to that? I know my own son got waitlisted, and then the opportunity did come up for the second section of World Languages, but I know that it was waitlisted at a pretty big number.
Yep. So that is our stretchers program, and that does partner with Camp Sturbinon. What we run into there is a capacity issue because we partner with, we are fortunate enough to be able to provide that to our students without a cost, but the YMC also provides that to their families who access that during the whole year. So we are somewhat capped on that. Our 4th grade, and I don't want to steal their thunder either, does also have an opportunity to go out there for a week for all of our 4th grade students, but that's, we run into the capacity piece with that too.
Sure.
But always something we look at to see what else we can add and provide.
Sure. I mean, it's nice that you were able to at least have an option for that in that instance.
And I think it became more popular also when it became a full day, because they did have afternoon programming as well and did a lot of field trips and.
Sure, sure. Thanks.
Alright, so we are going to start with our high school, and we have Sophie and Chellis here to present about their high school art enrichment experiences some.
Okay, hello, I am Sophie.
I'm Chellis.
And we are two students who participated in the mural enrichment program. This program really helped us improve on some skills, both artistic, such as color mixing and working on sketches and transferring, and also some life skills like patience. The Art Enrichment Program is a great way to challenge students and helps them and offers them more like one-on-one help than you would usually get in a classroom setting and like just more in-depth improving on their art skills and even with the long hours, kind of show them what it's like to work on art full-time and see if they want to do that as maybe a career. And all around, it's just a great way to be able to leave your mark on the school and it shows that you really are recognized when you do something well and that, especially in our students' cases, because that isn't really commonly recognized.
Yeah, this was a really big time commitment for me and it kind of scared me at first because it was 12 hours a day for two weeks, but once I jumped into it on the first day, it wasn't nearly as scary as I thought it'd be. I got to meet many new amazing people, which, we all did critiques every day and it pushed me towards my end product, which really, it was a very rewarding feeling to finish the art in the end, and now I do have my permanent mark on Wausau West, which is a very good feeling.
And these are just some of the examples. The rest of them can be found over at Wausau West. Thank you. One of our most successful summer learning programs is our 5th grade transition to middle school, also known as Camp School Forest. So our 5th graders going into 6th grade spend two days either at Horace Mann or John Meere and then two days out at the school forest. So Gretchen is here to talk about her experiences.
What I liked the best of being out at the school forest, because we got to go kayaking, hiking, and fishing, and I liked to go to the Horace Mann and do the locker races because I, it took me five minutes the first time I tried to open my locker, and then I got better at it. And I'm glad that I went to the summer learning camp because I met one of my teachers and I met some new friends, and the tour of Horace Mann was really good for me because I thought it was a really big school, but it actually wasn't after we did the tour.
Great.
Thank you, Gretchen, and I will say, many of our middle schoolers mentioned time and time again that summer learning is so important as a transition to a new big school. So, thank you, Gretchen.
Okay, and next we'll have Jimmy Peck, and he'll talk about Community Connection Program. He's attended three years, and he'll have one more.
Four years.
Four years.
Don't shorten it right here.
Hi, my name is Jimmy and I'm in 4th grade. I've been going to Community Connections for four years. To start off, just name some of my favorites that are swimming, doing yoga at the school, we're doing it at Mon Gardens. I love going to Mon Gardens because you get to do all sorts of fun stuff there, and the Once in the Summer movie, and it's also a safe place for kids to go where their parents still work, if they have to work late since summer school ends in the middle of the day. And it's just a place that goes to 3:00 PM, I think, 4:00 PM. And it's really awesome. I have lots of fun there. I play with a lot of friends, and it's just a great place to have fun.
Oh, very nice. Gretchen, you're welcome. Thank you.
Alright, and I have Carly and Annie, and they're going to talk about their experience. Well, Carly, start out talking about her experience in 4th grade.
I was in the 4th grade summer program called Fit Kids Adventure Camp. We had a pretty basic day with math, reading, and game time. During math, we worked on our multiplication and division facts. During reading, we went on an app on our iPads called Reading Eggs, which is reading books and then they ask questions about it. During the game time, we were taught how to play frisbee golf, baseball, and pickle. Some of the favorite things I had were going to the frisbee golf course and the putt-up golf course at Sommel, and I also enjoyed going to Camp Sturbinon because we got to swim, zip line, and hike.
We'll turn it over to Annie.
My name is Annie Bees, and I did the 1st grade summer school program. My favorite thing was meeting new friends. I did math for adding and subtraction. I did Super Kids, and my fun field trip was going to the Raptors program.
Now I'll open it up for any questions to anyone on our panel.
I was wondering, the county board is going to be cutting their nonprofits over the next four years to zero, 25% a year, and I know you guys work for the Boys and Girls Club. Do you have any plans with how that's going to affect summer school?
In terms of summer learning, I mean, they're doing their outreach programs. We don't pay them anything for those programs. So you're saying if those agencies are reduced in size? No, haven't really considered that. Guess I better start having some conversations about that.
Did you say we have four years?
They're 25% a year. But Supervisor Johnson has a plan to avert it, so hopefully we'll see. Glad you mentioned it.
Alright, thanks for having us, Debbie.
Well, I just wanted to say, I don't know if any board members have any children or grandchildren that do summer school. My son did it this past summer, and I was really impressed. He had so much fun. There were really fun field trips. It would, I was actually a little nervous at how fun it was because I know going into 3rd grade was going to be a big change, but it was okay. But I was really impressed and he had a great time. And I wanted to thank all of the speakers that came and shared with us because we really learn a lot when we hear directly from the students, so thank you very much. And the 12 hours a day with the art enrichment, that's really impressive. I know it sounded daunting, but I'm really glad to hear that you found it rewarding. And I'm going to go check out the artwork at Wausau West now that I know about it, and I'm thinking I'm not the only board member who's going to do that. So thank you for coming and talking to us about that.
Thank you all.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have another whole child, whole Wausau short cycle report, and this is on the goal to optimize resources. It will be presented by Larry Tyler and Bob Test.
Alright, let me see if this is working. It is. Thank you. Talk about this strand of our strategic plan optimization of resources, number one, and what it involves. I invited a couple of gentlemen here to join us, Steve Short from Nexus, my immediate right, and Brian Winterlee from Nexus, next in line, and of course Larry Tyler. Nexus has been with us for almost as long as I've been here. They're very familiar with our buildings. They're starting to really understand culture. They're starting to understand what some of our interests are and our goals. They've met a lot of people. It's not unusual for these gentlemen to walk into a building and talk to the person they see first in the office, and hi, Brian, how's it going? And Kelly or Deb or whoever is waiting for you in Conference Room B, and you go down there, and they're getting to be a real part of the district. And just a reminder, AR1, optimization of resources, I think you asked that it is optimizing resources. Number one, has to do with optimizing resources in staffing and buildings in particular in order to have comprehensive pupil services teams throughout the district. That was important when we started our strategic planning. People came out pretty strong saying, yes, we would like to optimize our buildings and our staffing if it meant improved student behavior and ability to address some other concerns in our buildings. So, we're doing this through optimization of resources, but the goal is full pupil services teams in every building. What is going well, we're going to follow the same template, at least for all the other strategic plan strands, our current defeasance strategy. We didn't have a strategic plan, but it certainly was a strategy going back three years ago. We've been in the middle of that strategy, third year, even though the strategic plan that we're currently following wasn't formally developed until much after we had the strategy. I already mentioned how great it is working with Nexus and how they really are becoming a part of our district and understanding culture and understanding the relationships and our interests. And I'm going to turn it over from here to Larry and Brian, I believe, to talk about what we're doing with the building principals in particular.
Okay, so the folks from Nexus here have been making their way through the district, talking to the building principals, and the part that pertains a lot to me or that I have an interest in is obviously the condition of the buildings, the adequacy of the buildings to serve their intended purpose, obviously education. And it goes beyond just the buildings. It's the grounds, it's the fields, it's the infrastructure. Is it too hot, too cold? Can we control the building well from a heating and ventilating standpoint? Are the restrooms adequate? Is the lighting adequate? You know, does the roof leak? So I'm sure Brian can expound on a few of the things that they've found and discovered. Hopefully what they're hearing from the principals are some of the same things that I've been sharing with them. I'm hoping that there are no big surprises of principals going, oh, my roof looks like a sieve, and I'm going, oh, really? News?
Yeah, most of our meetings with the principals, we've been doing more listening and writing and engaging and kind of asking some probing questions. When we met with the principals, we had a scorecard that we went through, started, did everything on the outside, worked our way in. We covered everything from safe traffic, pedestrian, walkways, busing, where's parking short or in excess? We looked at playgrounds and everything, you know, hardscapes, asphalt, you know, all that outside. And then inside, we looked at what's, what is your secure entryway look like? How do you get to the office? What are some accessibility concerns? How can somebody, staff or student, that's either in a wheelchair, crutches, one of those little leg things if you have a leg repair, you know, surgery, so how does all that happen? And then we start to look at space by space. How are the number of classrooms? Are you good with that based on current enrollment? Looking at some of the specialty spaces like science, art, music, some of those STEM programs. What do you either have or don't have, and how is that hampering your ability to teach students?
And if you look at this slide and you see what is going well, and it's a pretty short slide, don't be deceived by that. We're just starting this process, so we'd like to say many other things are going well. These are big three, really they are. The defeasance is huge. You're going to hear the phrase educational adequacy a lot, and that's what we're doing with principals right now. And Brian, personally, I believe, has met with every principal with AR1 we have to meet yet.
Yep.
And we're putting that together with what Nexus already knew about our buildings in terms of the infrastructure and the heating, cooling, roofs, windows, things like that. Now we're getting a little bit more into the educational adequacy of it. So if things are going very well, even though that list looks small, what is the current status? There are many things that are underway right now. You can't not mention defeasance one more time, I guess, that's current status, going very well. And with that, maybe Steve or Brian can talk about the polling that we're doing right now.
Sure. We have undertaken a phone polling. We call it sort of a poll that is 60 questions long. Demographically spread out, every age group, people with, without students in the district. It's statistically accurate to about 4.5%. So we call it atmospherics testing. It tests the board. Do the taxpayers and the people we're polling, do they have faith in the board, the administration, the teachers? And then we have a list of, it's about 62 questions, I believe, is what we settled on. That's in the middle. We should be done with that in about a week, and then we'll be combining and pulling all the information together and coming back with what the atmospherics are telling us. We polled all of the occupants of the building. We did a staff survey. That information is back. We're pulling it together, and we'll be able to share it with the administration shortly. Gathering updated enrollment and capacity data. Bob is working with our group on gathering the new Third Friday count information, rolling that in, and then how does that fit into capacity planning? And that capacity planning rolls into the educational adequacy. Do we have the right space at the right at the school to be able to deliver the curriculum that you have at that particular school? Brian mentioned already the meeting with the principals and the educational adequacy, and he's also, along with our engineering group, finishing up the ongoing assessment of the current physical buildings. And the ideation sessions are getting ready to start. I guess you've had tremendous feedback and participation, people wanting to sign up. Those will kick off in earnest next week. We'll have two on Monday. We have another one on Tuesday, another one on Wednesday, one the week of the 13th, and then we finish up with the following three the week of the 18th. If you haven't participated in those, I would encourage you. Other districts that I, we've worked with, that I've worked with in particular, have participated, found it extremely interesting. It's, you're getting the voice of the public. What do they, what do they value? What do they see? What do they want your district to be able to deliver? So if you're, are not signed up for it, I would highly encourage you to attend one of those sessions.
See, I've got it going on two screens here. Let's look at this one. Challenges being encountered. They might be, this might be a longer list eventually when we have done some of the things where we're in the midst of. Time is certainly going to be a challenge. Life gets in the way. Business gets in the way. Come up. You'll see later on with the Gantt chart, we have a pretty tight timeline between now and November 2020 and even beyond that. And to disrupt, it wouldn't take much to disrupt that, enough to throw that timeline out of whack, but we are held to a few pretty firm dates. If you think about the end game, not end game, maybe wrong phrase, but if you think about a November 2020 referendum, you can back map from November 2020, three months prior, the board has to state what the question is going to be. You need to develop and let the community come up with the question, or else it's destined to fail. So there are things that need to happen between now and November 2020, which certainly isn't that far away, a year away, and time is going to be the biggest challenge to continue to do the things that we're doing and work in some of the work that you're going to see later on. Some of the other challenges will be revealed. Some of them through the survey, the phone survey with the general public, some of them through the ideation sessions, which are just starting next week, Monday, some of them from polling the occupants of the buildings. So, some of the challenges have yet to be revealed, really, but they will be revealed. I don't know how often you're going to see short cycle reports. You might see us doing this again in a few months, and we'll have a whole screen of challenges. We'll see. Let's keep our fingers crossed, right? But those are challenges that we're anticipating. What are the next steps? We've already mentioned the ideation sessions. We're continuing to work on enrollment. We've got Third Friday enrollment. You're going to see our projections that Mr. Uding is going to share later on. Our enrollment is going down. Where is our enrollment going down? Is it in elementary? Is it in middle school, high school? Some of those, the analysis that we do, and we've shared some of it with you the past couple of years, but we're going to be doing it this year with a little bit more rigor with Nexus's help. And they do this in a lot of other districts, and they might be able to bring some insight that we failed to come up with on our own. So that's going to come up in the next steps. And then the big one, next steps, I'll turn this one over to Steve because there's a lot on the screen.
Okay. So I, let's see, does this?
No.
It doesn't?
But it don't stop.
Okay. Well, there's a line that runs vertical on the screen between October and November. So what we've done so far, capacity projections, that's all done. Facility condition assessment, Brian and his group has worked, finished up. We are in the middle or almost towards the end of the first community awareness polling that I mentioned, the atmospherics. Conducting the educational adequacy assessment, Brian has one more principal to finish up. And then what we'll do, we'll come back and we look at the district enrollment information that Bob just mentioned. Next week, we start, as I mentioned a few minutes ago, start the community engagement. That'll be wrapped up by the third week of November. Then we start to develop facility master plan options based on all that data input, the demographics, the capacity planning, the educational adequacy, the feedback from the community from the informational sessions. We start developing plan options to take a look at, and that'll run us through about the end of January. And also in that same time period, we'll be developing with Bob and your financial advisor, PMA. We'll be developing some financial options to go along with the different options that we come up with for the facility master plan. And we'll bring that back, and we'll discuss with the administration what those potential options are. That takes us through the end of February. Then we'll reconvene a task force, community task force, that will actually look at the options that have come out of the administration, get their feedback, and then the, we'll conduct what we call World Cafe Sessions. That's, once we have the different options that the administration has, and the task force is brought forward, we'll have big picture boards up there. We'll invite the community to participate again, show them what has come up and the options that are available. And then the task force will ultimately end, at the same time, will be conducting a public opinion polling of a plan. So once the plan starts to get finalized, we'll do another poll, find out what the public thinks of it, especially from a tax standpoint, if there is a tax impact, to get that, gauge the reception of that particular plan. And then the task force will be making a recommendation to the board somewhere around the middle of May, which is that first star there. And then coming out of that, you may decide that there's some tweaks that you'd like to make. You've got about two months to make those tweaks to the plan. And then the end of, Bob was mentioning earlier, about beginning of August, 75 days prior to the election, you have to set the referendum language, what that referendum is going to entail, and then from there, you go into about a two-month campaign, two, two-and-a-half month campaign for the referendum, and then a successful, if you decide to go for November 2020, would be on November 3rd. Any questions on timeline? As Bob said, get back into that. It's pretty compressed. We've been working on this for a couple of months now, but about 14 months is, 14, 15 months is a good amount of time to do what we need to do and pull together a great plan that's community-driven.
Bob, what are we hearing from the legislators about all-day four-year-old kindergarten?
Probably wouldn't be decided by this. You might get an idea of what's going to happen by November 2020, or preferably by August 2020, because that's when you set the language. We do have that listed as one of our operational referendum. We do have that listed as one of our operational referendum questions, as well as maybe a building referendum question.
Well, you know, sometimes I go over to Hawthorne Hills and I think they were built for four classrooms. And one year they only had one classroom, morning and afternoon filled, didn't have enough kids even to use any of the other three rooms. Might have been last year where they had a full session, morning and afternoon, and then a morning session. But boy, there's a lot of empty space in those 4K centers that we built because returning enrollment.
There might be, but there certainly isn't enough room for us to double the enrollment. Essentially, you'd be taking all your afternoon sessions and canceling them because your mornings are going all day. If you think about it that way, we wouldn't have enough room. Situations like that would help, but we wouldn't have enough room. We would have to do a combination of relying on community partners more or making use of existing classrooms that are open, which there aren't a lot of them. There are a few scattered throughout the district though. Maybe a combination. Or new building.
It'll be interesting. This Saturday is our legislative advocacy meeting for the WASB down in Stevens Point. And Kitchens and Olson will have a session where they tell us what their plans are. So they might have.
That might reveal quite a bit, especially also in the position he's in, usually is pretty good at anticipating what the education committee will do.
Hey Bob, just a couple of questions. Maybe this is for Brian, who's interviewing the principals. What is the plan to engage? And I appreciate, the principals have a perspective on educational adequacy, I think is Howard's terming it. What's the plan to engage the frontline staff, the teachers themselves to get their impact?
When we met with the principals, what we, some principals already had to engage the staff, some had done it themselves. And what I told them is, even if they thought of something or they wanted to engage their staff at like an all-staff meeting, to please do that and send us things if we didn't comment on that. So what we'll do is we'll bring back a proposed conceptual plan for any, any issues they have for solutions. And usually what happens is, you know, if the referendum passes down that way, we would engage design committees to really get into the nitty-gritty of the design. But for right now, this is holistic planning as far as what are the, what are the issues? As far as, you know, is a cafeteria needed if they're, if a gym is sharing that food service responsibility? So the staff is being engaged and I think there was a, there was a staff survey also that we, that we received. So all staff had the ability to comment on any issues in the buildings.
Okay.
And also diluted as it might be, because it's with the rest of the public, the ideation sessions would also provide another opportunity. But as I said, diluted with the rest of the public, but they would have an opportunity.
Right.
There will also be multiple opportunities during this process for them to engage and make their thoughts. If they haven't already been captured, make their thoughts.
The teachers have received some sort of questionnaire or survey on this already, also have they not? I think they have.
All building occupants, no matter the employment group, have all had a chance to say something already.
On Thursday night at the regional five dinner, they said, "School boards, you're not doing your work if you don't engage students and find out what they think is missing, what's needed." And so I hope that, especially at the middle school and high school, you have some way of engaging the high school and middle school students about what they see are real needs that aren't being met.
We actually have plans for an ideation session just for students.
Oh, good, okay.
I guess my last, not really a question, I guess more of a request. The last time we went through, we went through this, it seems like we've been doing this almost perpetual, at least for the last eight years, right? I recall personally having difficulty following some of the data that was presented relative to capacities of schools. I always felt like there was two sets of facts, right? There was this capacity and then there was the preferred capacity and then there was the desired capacity. Can we try to come to some consensus on what we think the ideal capacity is? I know for me selfishly, it would be easier to make decisions. I struggled with that last.
Exactly. I understand what you're saying, especially at the middle school level where we're talking about the middle school concept or the junior high concept. And we did change capacities for that reason when we said, "We want the middle school concept." It's preferred by our middle school people. We also did make some, I guess, adjustments when PRA stopped presenting material and Brae started presenting material, we talked to operational capacity. And PRA made a habit of talking about full capacity and operational capacity. With most architects, I've discussed this with, full capacity is never really even mentioned. It's, you probably agree that operational capacity is the capacity, it's the realistic capacity. So I think from start to finish, we should talk about operational capacity. And it's probably 85% or 90% of full capacity. There's a kind of an industry-wide accepted amount. So, point well taken. I agree, that was kind of confusing. We talked about, well, if we change our model of delivery to a middle school concept, the capacity changes, which it does. It does change. It's much tighter in a building if you want to adhere to the middle school concept.
That's a great question. And we, we have to factor in also, what are your board standards? What do you operate? How many kids in the class do you have for this grade level for middle school? So that, that factors also into the capacity. But Bob is right, in that 85 to 90% operational capacity is what is considered kind of full capacity, because you have to allow for a bumper crop of the student to be able to move through a building if you have to. So, great question.
Thank you. What's the, what's the plan for updating the board along the way in terms of, you know, when you're developing the facility master plan options and when you're having the administrative and staff review, when you're engaging the task force? Because I know you don't want the board to develop the whole way and, because then there's no task force recommendation. But on the other hand, if we don't know about it until the recommendation, we're not going to reach an agreement in two months. It won't happen.
Steve was great. He said, "Hey, what's going to happen when they ask this question on Monday night?" They have the right to ask that question. We will either come back with short cycle reports in between when we're not scheduled to go, or we'll find other germane to the conversation agenda items that will bring up updates, or we'll just call it OR1 update to the board. We'll call it something, but you're right. There's going to be a lot of excitement happening and we want you to at least hear about it. Maybe not be totally involved in decisions because we want the community to organically generate, to generate some of this, but we certainly want to bring it to you. So the means by which we bring it to you, it might be an intermittent short cycle report, maybe OR1, because this is a pretty big one, might appear more often in our cycle. Or we'll just slip in an update to the board on OR1.
And you may just have to be blunt and remind us that we have a task force that's working on this, so don't nitpick every single thing we're saying today. You might have to do that.
I'm just hoping you guys remind me of that, but I'll try and.
But I really think that's going to be important, because if, if we're not hearing about this and talking about this and at least giving you some general ideas until the task force, task force recommendation, I don't, I don't see us reaching an agreement in two months if we haven't been thinking about it and along the way and conceptualizing along the way. And there might be a big, huge no or a big, huge yes along the way that we kind of give to you as well.
Let me ask this question of the board in general. Considering we're kind of presenting it now and we try to make a habit of bringing things to the operations committee and then it comes to the board later, could this be considered old enough news that it goes straight to the board, for example? Or do you want it to go to the operations committee first?
I think that'd be determined by the timing. Whatever the next meeting is, we can do it because we're watching the whole, the community's a whole.
And it's not really, it's not, it's not going to be action. It's going to be updating us and, you know, kind of getting head nods and that kind of thing. And I remember the last time we went through it and Bob, you and I were on the phone, probably five hours a day with each other, what we're working on when we're on the phone. So, and that was, you know, trying to crunch that all in at the end. And that was a multi-year process that we went through to get to that, so.
We can do that again or we can modify that a little bit and get more updates, what I'm hearing. Let's, let's have updates and let's put it on a board meeting if necessary, knowing that it's, it's old business, so it doesn't necessarily go to the ops because it's here first. We'll bring them up if necessary.
One of the problems we ran into last time, right at the, at the end, is we had some radically different options on the table. And at that point, there should only be marginally different options on the table, right? And so we could have gone and when we had that meeting where we were cut 50/50 on it and then you two had to go back to the drawing board and spend probably most of your weekend preparing for the next meeting. That's because we had some very different ideas about what we could do. So getting us kind of narrowed down ahead of time would save us the crunch at the end.
I would say there's, based on experience, there's a couple of ideal times to have those conversations. One would be at the, sort of at the end of the January time period, where we develop some options. We have a financial plan to be able to do that. And in fact, I'm going to throw a number out here, I don't know what the numbers would be, but just for argument's sake, let's say the needs were identified at $100 million. You may come back and say, "I'm going to whittle that down to 75," and we can financially do 75 or whatever. So there's, that's a really good time to have one of those discussions. Then the other time to have those discussions and understandings would be during the World Cafe sessions. I would encourage you to participate in those also, because that's when you're going to be hearing what the community is telling you, when you've got these boards up there, these conceptual plans, of what they're telling you. "I like this, I don't like this, this is perfect, this missed the boat," whatever the case may be. So that's another time for you to have that touch point with, with the public.
One of the big factors that swung that discussion one way or the other is, is we had to decide, we had some feedback from the community with, with how much financially the community would support. And so then we had as a board, had to decide how, how close to that number did we need to be? Did we want to go way under that to give us a better chance of passing it? Do we want to be more aggressive and actually get everything we want, but then maybe it fails? And having that discussion late isn't a good thing, because it totally throws out half the options once we make that decision.
Right. So we had that fairly late and then we went back to the architectural furnace and, "Well, what can you do for this dollar amount, that dollar amount?" And that just kind of opened the door for them to have these wild swings about, maybe close that school, maybe combine these schools, et cetera, which is where we had the problems in our discussions with each other. So if we can, well before those last two months, like by the middle of this spring, get some ideas about, about what's acceptable, what's not acceptable in terms of the sorts of opportunities, then I think we'll have a lot easier time of it.
And the task force is going to appreciate that as well. They're not going to spend all kinds of time working on options that then comes to us and you say, "Well, that's $20 million more than we're interested in."
Nor do we.
Right.
Seriously.
About what time in the timeline do you think you'll come up with the dollar amount?
Oh, it will be coming up with ranges in that December, January time period.
Okay. And then what I mean is the dollar amount that the community is likely to support?
That typically comes in the public opinion polling, which is scheduled for the middle of March, April time period. Sometimes it's not so much the dollar amount, it's the mix of the things in there. There might be some boat anchors that'll absolutely take you down a path of failure. So, and it might have minimal impact, right? So it's sort of the mix and the dollar amount. But if you could hone in and really fine tune what that package is as close to being as possible, that'll really give us an opportunity to hone in on the tax impact, to be able to come back and say to you, "Here's your tax tolerance," right? And, you know, based on experience, don't push the limit on this. This is what's polling it.
One thing unique this time, that a lot of school districts statewide don't, aren't offered this opportunity. It happened in Dorona a few years ago. It didn't happen to us in 2015, is how we structured our debt payments to present this opportunity.
Right.
I believe I shared a sample debt offering to you last spring. And that sample might have been as big as $60 million and mill rate going down. So how do you convey to the public the mill rate impact and a yes vote is a negative this? What are they up to? Well, what's a no mean? If a yes means negative 20 cents, what does a no mean? Negative $2? And that whole communication, what that means and how it comes off to the taxpayers and how we've been in the middle of this strategy for three years already in anticipation of this, even though we didn't know if there was going to even be a question, but it was the smart thing to do. How you mix that into taxpayer impact? Because almost certainly, we're going to be able to pull off almost anything we come up with, with a negative taxpayer mill rate impact. But negative compared to what? That whole concept.
Well, it could be that we have a negative impact on the mill rate if we take the loan and bill new, but it could go the other way if we don't take the loan and have to do some serious spending to keep our buildings open.
But unfortunately, without an operational referendum question, we wouldn't be able to spend more to keep the buildings open. It would be cut, no matter what. Unless you have an operational referendum question, your revenue limit is your revenue limit. So we wouldn't be able to just spend more to keep our buildings open.
I just, I have to say, the work that Nexus has done with the district relative to those energy, all of that, I have, personally, I've been extremely impressed and I am very excited about what I think this one will bring. I just, I think that there's an opportunity here to do some things that we've never thought of in the last one. I don't even know why I think that, but I just, I've got a lot of faith in you guys, so.
Thank you.
You know, just, just coming through in a different district, an energy efficient building project that we went through, that's going to be very big. And a lot of times that energy savings that you're going to make, it's also going to come back to us as well. You know, it'd be very interesting. I do, I'm just listening to everything, being new to the board and, and listening to some of the problems, I can say that most boards have problems when everything waits till the end. So I like that idea of having some talking points throughout, so we're all aware of it, versus waiting till the end, because it only puts more stress on you guys going back to do something different, because we, we didn't know that. So I really like what I'm hearing, what you're talking about. I'm excited about this.
Any other questions for us? Are you all right?
Doesn't sound like it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda, we have the 2019, 2020 students' demographic report, which is going to be presented by John.
Good evening. You have a copy of the 2019 student demographic report and it's fairly similar and straightforward to the reports that you've seen in the past. Just a couple of quick reminders that all the numbers in there are solely based on that September 20th day in September. So our official count is 8,217 students. That could be up or down from that now, based upon ins and outs within the districts and rules. So that, that's the official count that we use moving forward. As Bob mentioned, you'd see that we're down 91 students as of that day from the previous year. That is also, we've downed about 101 students last year at this time. So not quite as much backdrop as we've seen in the past, but still the declining enrollment is in place there with that. If you take a look at page eight, if we scroll through here real quick, just a couple of changes that you might notice on this Third Friday count in general. In the past, you just saw ECC there for early childhood, and I broke that out into E3, E4, and E5, which is early childhood, three-year-olds, four-year-olds, and five-year-olds. We had the information on those age brackets, so I thought we would break it out and represent them as, as the groups they are and give us a better understanding of that pre-kindergarten group of students that we have. The other big change here that you might want to be aware of, and I noted it on the front. front page, the 4K outreach sites have been added as their own site or listing on this report. So you can see this year, there were a hundred and forty-five 4K students in our outreach sites. Previously, those students were included in the GD Jones numbers. So if you look down at the bottom from GD Jones, you would see their population last year was six hundred and nine students, and this year, it's reflected as four hundred and forty-five students. GD Jones did not lose a hundred and fifty-nine students, or whatever that exact math turns out to. Those students who were 4K were just broken into their separate group to allow us to track that a little bit better and stay accurate with the populations at, at GD Jones. One other thing to notice on this maybe, you would see at second grade, we're down ninety-two students, that's a big drop for one grade at a time, but last year kindergarten into first grade saw a decline of about a hundred students. So that's a group of students that's rolling through the system. So next year, you would anticipate around a ninety-student drop from second grade rolling into third grade, and then that, that one will continue to roll through. A little bit on this chart, tried to condense it and maybe give you a different picture, and it aligns a little bit for a two-year snapshot with what Bob was talking about. The five tables on the bottom just show you those specific groups from this year compared to last year. So if you wondered, well, are we really up in preschool or are we down in preschool? We've gained seven more preschooler, early childhood students. Elementary is down ninety-nine students as compared to last year. Middle school enrollment, up by forty-three students there when you look at all things considered. High school is down forty-two. Now, the far right graph is just K-12, so it doesn't take into account the five hundred or so early childhood and 4K students, so that's why that number does not represent eight thousand two hundred seventeen. But just looking at our K-12 students, we're down about ninety-eight in that realm with that. I think those are the big changes on, on that sheet. I don't know if there's any questions specific to that, or just a few other?
Yeah, John, we still see that, that bulge moving through the middle school.
Yep.
Is there another one coming up in the elementary schools at any, at any point?
Another bulge in the elementary?
In the elementary schools, like we see, you know, that bulge of students moving through middle school, and then onto high school pretty soon. Is there another wave like that coming towards us?
No, not necessarily. I haven't looked at, so specific to that, but that's a good segue into a new, new table that was added to the chart. Tried to take some of that enrollment projection information and condense it down a little bit, and, and this might just be where you would see some of those things. You've always had this information, it was just a much bigger table, much smaller font, so tried to condense it a little bit and make it a little bit easier to decipher. So on the left there, in the dark purple, those are the actual enrollments for those years there. And then the number underneath, so if you looked at K-12, two thousand twelve, seven thousand nine hundred and forty-two, that was a movement upward from the previous year. So the number underneath is either a positive or a negative. The red are losses, the blacks are, are gains there in that enrollment. So if you would look, Jeff, at the, at the top one in relation to your question, you would see we're down ninety-two, remember this is K-12, not, not 4K, so it's not that ninety-one. Next year, we would look to see another loss of about sixteen students, K-12, and you can see that, that we're seriously into that declining, declining enrollment that we're projecting now through twenty twenty-five there. So to take a look at the middle school, if you drop down to the six-eight, you can see the middle school now, and we talked about this last year, there was a bump coming, we were probably going to see an increase, but then after that, even our middle schools are going to start to see that decline, and you can see that there too. There might be a singular grade at the elementary, but we're not seeing those out. Elementary is in that decline, other than potentially twenty twenty-three, where we might see three students up. But the big thing, if you look at this, in this year, our K-12 enrollment was seven thousand six hundred and sixty-six students. Forecasting that forward to twenty twenty-five, when we start looking at those projections and a referendum and all the capacities and things that we're talking about, we're projecting now, a K-12 enrollment is seven thousand one hundred and twelve students. So those red numbers really start to add up over the five years as far as our projected enrollments and the impact those will have. Some of the other things while we're talking declining, some of the things that help offset that a little bit, we've had less students move out of the district, and we've had more students moved in. I think if I looked at the number, there's about thirty-seven more students that moved into the district than moved out. Looking at, when you get back through those charts a little bit. There we go. Just going to jump through to here. The key thing with these charts, when you get down to like pages eighteen, there's new open enrollments. So that's just kids that applied this year that we're talking about. So here, pre-K through twelve, there were a hundred and sixty-two students that were new applicants to open enrollment to come to leave our district. We had ninety-two students that newly applied to come into our district. Those numbers are fairly in line with what we've been seeing, but I just want to make sure that when you're looking at these, that is just the new students, because the next set of graphs now says, okay, where are we all together if we look at our new kids plus the existing ones? So you may have had a student in third grade that's been filling this application out, and they're now in, in ninth grade. We want to see that holistic number, so, so don't mix the two. When you look at new and existing, there are four hundred and fifty-two. You can see the districts and the grade levels, and then there are two hundred and eighty-one coming in through open enrollment, new and existing. This last has nothing to do with open enrollment. This is simply somebody physically moving to Wassa or somebody physically moving out of Wassa. These are just moves absent that, and that's where we have more students moving in than we have moving out. That's where we're seeing a gain that way with students. So, like I say, the rest of it is fairly consistent, our frame reduced, dropped a couple percentage points, but again, that's fairly static. If you look at any of the ethnicity groups and breakdown, that's remained fairly static, a little ups and downs with it. English learner percentages have stayed relatively the same. The biggest shifts or swings are with our declining enrollment. Other factors demographically have remained fairly stable from last year to this year, but they're pretty well in line with where they've been the last few years with that. So I'd be glad to answer any questions, or provide any more information, or?
John, if I'm thinking of this correctly, we're seeing a positive influx of new students moving in versus those that are physically moving out.
Yes.
That's a plus for us. Where we are seeing our declining enrollment are those that are still physically located here, but they're making a choice to say, I'm going to this district for whatever reason versus the Wassa district.
Yeah, that, that's exactly right, and that, that, it's been a trend for the last few years, that those number of options of open enrollment, students leaving versus coming in through open enrollment.
Yeah.
That, that trend is, has been there, been looking at it.
Along with lower birth rates and lower 4K classes, that's also considered when, when you get a 4K class that's quite a bit smaller than your senior class that's leaving, and you swap out a big for a small, your enrollment's going to go down for that reason too.
Oh, yeah, but I'm, I'm just looking at, at the absolute values, and when I, when you look at that, I mean, to me, that, that's the crux of our declining enrollment. It's not that people are not coming to Wassa, they are, more that are leaving. Our issue is the ones that are here are saying, for whatever reason, I'm going to go elsewhere.
It's the retention of our existing students that don't opt out. You would see, if you look at those numbers, believe it, we gain, moving in, there. The, as we get into the middle school and the secondary, that is where we start to get more, these are the, the movement number. There's, there's some grades where we tend to lose more students for that, some early on, in open enrollment, they'll get out, and they tend to stay, and then it's those transition points between sixth grade and maybe ninth grade, where, where they take a look at their options, and then maybe that's where they open and roll out. We do have more kids coming in at the high school levels, we have some kids there too.
So out of our ninety-one, out of our loss of ninety-one, seventy of them were just students that chose to.
Open and roll.
Open and roll out. If we consider our out and our in, we're down about seventy this year on that.
I think we're down a little less.
Well, our, our total down is a hundred and seventy. Not just the one year, but the total.
Right, but that you couldn't compare to the ninety we lost this year. I'm just saying, like, this year, we lost ninety students from last year, well, seventy of those are students that chose to leave versus come in.
So if I see this correctly, where the decision points are the same for coming in or going out, for, for students who choose, in, in terms of the grades that they decide, the families decide to move the kids, but we're, we're, we're down a net hundred and seventy students from, you know, not just this year, but, but total. And so, you know, how, how are we addressing the, the fact that more students leave our district, choice out than choice in?
Maybe you can think about that. Well, I, last year, I've got our open enrollment out versus in as a negative one forty-six. So it was, the trend was starting, it got worse by thirty-some this year, it's one ninety, one seventy-one this year.
Right.
So the out versus in is negative one seventy-one, last year was one forty-six, the year before that, it was only ninety-three, year before that, it was sixty-two.
So we're seeing an upward trend, and the question, I think that's really germane to all this is why? And what, what is underneath that? That's personally what I'm interested in.
One thing, I, I've looked district statewide, and statewide, a lot of big school districts are seeing this.
Okay.
Big school districts are seeing losing the open enrollment game that they all won seven or eight years ago. And we can pull up data statewide real quick and say, what's the out, what's the in, what's the difference? So we're not alone in this, some of it might be fleeing to smaller schools where our parents feel safer, I don't know. That could be a factor, but we do know we're not alone. There are a lot of school districts that are experiencing this same trend, that open enrollment battle, losing it more and more.
See, that doesn't make me feel better, though.
I didn't say it to make you feel better, but you're right, it doesn't make me feel better.
Because it's, it's like choosing, you know, Ford is seeing a decline in their auto sales, but Chevy was seeing an increase. Consumers are going somewhere, and that's what we're losing, and that's why I'm really curious as to the why.
You're right, and we've got to do something for us.
Angie's itching.
So open enrollment comes across my desk, that I, it's through my department, so I read every one of them that's going out or coming in. A lot of these, you'll see McFarland, Medford, that's all online.
Yep.
So those are all different online programs. Sometimes we see kids go to them for three weeks and then come back to our district. Sometimes they stay for years, but we have to count them as open enrolled, even if they're on for three weeks.
So do they not know we have that option? Or is, do we tell them at this point, when you see that form, hey, we have Wave?
Yeah, we do.
Is it because we started so late?
McFarland and Medford have younger grades, we don't, we start at sixth grade, Wave, correct?
Yeah, okay.
So a lot of those younger grades will go to McFarland.
Okay, so there's, that's a data point, yeah.
So that is, that's a big part of what I see, is kids going to some of the virtual programs.
Yeah, and once they go with a young age, they're not going to switch to come back to ours in a later age.
Well, and sometimes they do, and it's really tough because they're.
Well, I don't want to beat it to death, but to me, that's a great data point, and something to consider in the plan, right?
But when, do we have any way to serve it, to survey the, the parents whose children have been moved out of the district, they chose somewhere else?
They're supposed to put a reason. They sometimes don't. A lot of times, I know, you know, some people look at that and think it's for a really bad reason. Rarely do I see a really bad reason on those forms for kids leaving. And when, and when we do, when I do see those, I call the principal, you know, we talk through it, they touch base with the parents, it's not like we're just seeing that reason and then not doing anything with it. We're trying to follow up on that, and.
Are there patterns in those reasons, though?
Not really, no.
It would be helpful to see these broken out as to online and people that are physically taking their kids to another district.
I will say that daycare is something to do with it as well, and we know there's a huge daycare issue right now, so when you're seeing an Edgar or a Marathon, that might be a parent who works in Edgar or Marathon, and that's the only way they can get in there.
Well, and to Bob's point too, I mean, this board has even seen concerned parents about the size of the district in their efforts and, and wanting to take their children to smaller districts, so, you know, our, our high schools are, are big, our middle schools are big, and with that comes a lot of opportunity, but for some people, they, they, that is not desired to have that many students in the school.
I just think there's another thing too, I think we've been a little late getting in, into the virtual Wave School program, whereas there are some of those that have been out there for some time, and they're advertising very strongly.
They're advertising a lot, Rogue Virtual Academy advertises a lot. But our problem is that we don't do the younger kids, so they start somewhere else, and they aren't going to switch normally midstream, because they're obviously comfortable with it, or they wouldn't stay with it all these years.
Angie, it'd be interesting to see, as you pointed out, when they leave, how many come back? Because a lot of times, what you get is you have people leaving before the count, and then all of a sudden, they start rolling back in after the count, and then you're talking about the loss of money and all of that type of stuff. It'd be nice if they stayed, and they knew a lot of information beforehand, so I'm sure you're working on that, but it'd be interesting to see how many leave and then come back in the year, until January.
I wonder how much the general public knows about the robust summer learning program we have? Because, you know, we hear the presentation tonight, and there's all kinds of stuff going on, I wonder if that could be kind of a trial, like invite people in to try on our district during the summer, and then possibly enroll in the fall, when they see all that's being offered.
This should be, and I think it is, but it, it's not a red flag, right? There's not a five-alarm fire right now, but this could be a big, big concern if that trend continues, right? Losing market share of your existing market is not good in any scenario, and I think he, you know, we talked about some of the marketing opportunities, and if there's more capabilities that are needed, I mean, we should absolutely be going after that stuff hard, because it's, it's a hundred here, it's two hundred there, it's a hundred and fifty this year, but you look at the curve, and it's been consistent, right? I mean, it's going in one direction. And I know, we can't be all things to all peoples, I think you're always going to see some of that leakage, so to speak, but it would seem that in our, you know, the majority of us, we offer, we offer a broad spectrum of services for the general population of kids, so.
Well, we talked about this at a recent meeting, about how we, you know, do whatever we can to get, to get information out there about all the things that we offer, because people don't realize that the advantage of a large district is, or all of the specialties that we offer. I mean, you can take classes and do things here that you just can't do in any of those surrounding districts, and that goes for the whole spectrum of students, whether they're students with special needs or students that are gifted. You know, we can offer so much more than what most of these, you know, competing districts can offer, and so we need to make sure everybody knows that.
All right, doesn't sound like there's any more questions, thanks, John. All right, moving on to the next item, this is the application for cooperative sponsorship of existing clubs. Paul?
Yes, thank you. So this kind of goes back to a discussion we had a couple months ago, we had a request regarding the lacrosse club here in the district, and I know Brian and now Greg Hardy over at East, we've had many discussions about this, with the idea that, you know, there's a, a balance of this, or some good, possibly some bad that comes out of this, so they felt they needed some guidance in, in being able to make wise decisions on whether or not this would benefit the kids. or not this would benefit the kids in our district. And so Brian and Greg worked on an application, which I assisted with, and using some of the co-op language from the WIA and adding in a few essential questions that we felt were important to determine whether or not it would be beneficial for the students in our district. They prepared an application and it's, this could be something that, you know, we tweak as we go forward, but I think it's a good start. I think it's a place where, I know Greg and Brian have people right now that are already asking them about, can you go in with this? Because they want answers to whether or not they'd be able to co-op with some of our clubs and organizations. And so, so I just bring this forward today on their behalf with the idea that you may take action on it so that we could have something in place for the, both of the activities directors.
So who fills this out?
It would be the club that wants to co-op with WSA. So if it was, or, or the school. So if it was some students from Newman or some students from Everest, they would fill this out and, and turn it into ours.
With the individual students or does the school submit it?
The school would need to submit it or the, or the district. And then it would need to be signed off by our district.
So prior, there, there's been nothing. You've just come to the board with?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, and, you know, just thinking of the board's reaction to when this has been requested and one of the only ones that we approved and that was even, we were close on that one, was because we thought that the WSA school district couldn't run the activity without the co-op. And that was really the deciding factor because we've shown very little interest in making it ea, we're talking about our loss of students. We've shown very little interest in making it easier for students to attend other schools but take advantage of things that we can do in the WSA school district. And certainly nothing has changed in my opinion in that regard. If we have anything that we can handle ourselves, that we can support ourselves, I, I wouldn't support cooperating with another district.
I think that's one of the questions that needs to be clarified in there is can it be sustained?
Yeah, because it talks about not wanting to displace WSA school district students. But yeah, number two asks whether we could run it without a cooperative agreement. I mean, you almost want to put in there, if the answer is yes, then we can stop now.
Yeah, this is telling ours, giving ours the guidelines to work on. And I think it does a pretty good job of that.
So Paul, is there, are there times when you don't come to the board because you just know, oh, this isn't going to go anywhere? Or if a request comes in, it always comes to the board?
Well, from just being here a short time, I know that there are requests coming in and the guys are just kind of holding off even making a, you know, giving them an answer to it, whether they're going to, but it would have to come to the, it would come to the board. They would not do, they would not allow it to happen. I mean, they just want to go on their own thing. Yeah, we'll, we'll take that.
Sure, okay. No, I'm just trying to see if there's a efficiency possibility here. I mean, kind of like Lance was saying, if there are certain things that we just know, hey, they're, the answer to this is no, the answer's going to be no.
Well, I think, yeah, I agree that if it's no, they could probably just say, you don't meet the criteria, we're saying no to this. But if it's a, if they think, they could bring it to you only in instances where, you know, they're looking for approval.
And I think that could be reflected on this form with the two, three and four here. If the answer is yes to these questions, then the answer from the board is no.
That, that sounds like a policy issue.
It does sound like a policy issue.
We need a policy that says that maybe if the, if the recommendation administration's going to be no, it doesn't have to come to us. If it's going to be yes, then it has to come to us. Or the board could decide in either case they want to see the proposal. So, I mean, but that should be some part of the policy.
I think that there's, some of these things really, the policy about the policy does is it puts the authority and responsibility there rather than having to bring everything to the board. And it keeps us from micromanaging things.
Do those co-ops require board approval?
Like a WIA co-op?
I mean, a WIA co-op would for sure, but would any other type of, you know, clubs, would those require board approval?
I would say in most instances, yes, that they would. Because you'd want approval from the other board. Because there's going to be, you know, there's going to be finances involved here of paying fees and.
Right. It doesn't happen that often that it's much of a burden on us for it to come to us to approve anyway, so.
But I, did I hear correct, Paul, that there is some interest right now from a few?
Different clubs and organizations that have been asking.
Right. So I don't know if this prompted that interest or if this has been an ongoing thing, we've just said no. I'm not sure, but there are a few that are looking.
Well, my thought on this too is we're going to get, I think we're going to see more and more of this. I just, I just do, as, as clubs and organizations expand to meet the needs of very diverse, diverse interests that are out there, that we're going to see groups where, well, we can get five kids from our school, we get a couple of kids from over in this school and maybe together we can have this public organization. So I, I just have a feeling that people are talking out there about, about these things and, and that, you know, a lot of times too, they need school affiliation in order to be participants in certain, you know, you see that quite often. They had an ice fishing club and the district had to sign off on it so they could participate in the state ice fishing tournament, you know, things like that, so.
So does the, does the board have interest in actually establishing a policy about this? So that there are times when it just stops with the administration and we don't have to address it?
Well, I think administration will probably want some guidelines. So I mean, that's what I would assume to be the case.
Yeah, like I think this form is, is good, but, you know, it'd probably be even more helpful to you if you had a policy that said, you know, so question number two is the school district have enough participants to run activity without a cooperative agreement. It'd probably help you to have a policy that says if the answer to that is yes, then the board isn't going to approve it. So you can just say no. And they don't, they're not mad at you then.
Right.
And they say, there's a board policy that says the answer is no and then, then it's not on you.
Yeah, you know, I guess we had, you know, Paul and the A.D.s had created this based on the feedback from the board previously, the previous meetings, but, you know, I think within the Neola structure, there was a policy that we were proposing to reject, that we could bring back for reconsideration. And this could become an administrative guideline. But one of those policies would be if we already, if what I'm hearing is correct, if we already have a viable group, we don't want to co-op. We want to keep it exclusive. And so really it would be almost forming new groups. Is, is that what I'm hearing?
Well, you know, on, on that point Keith, is there any use to a sort of a quid pro quo, building a relationship with another district that we know that they can't manage this, but if their kids could be involved in our program, it would be helpful to them down the road. They may, you know, give us a benefit back in that sense. Do you see anything down in that, of that in your experience?
Meaning that we have enough to sustain it on our own?
Yeah, we could do it, but as a sort of a, you know, goodwill gesture to another district, they can't sustain something we allow their kids in. Knowing that at some point in the future, we may have a bunch of kids here that aren't enough in numbers to facilitate some other kind of club. And we'd expect them to do the same for us. Is there any benefit to those kinds of relationships?
Yeah.
I think we should correct the door.
Our neighboring districts will always be the same neighboring districts.
When you start doing that, then a lot of our students then don't get the opportunity to participate because now the numbers are.
If the numbers are higher.
Yeah, the numbers are higher and then parents are upset about. Yeah, right, right.
Personally, I think we need to stay fairly close to that idea that if we can sustain it, that it belongs to our kids. This can get kind of muddy where you might have, well, they have three really good participants over here. We would, you know, now each of our people are angling just to get those kids into your club and organization just because they're, they're good players or, or whatever. And so I think that's the discussions I know that we've been having amongst ourselves between Greg and Brian and I in, in talking about this idea that if it's sustainable in our district, that it stays in our district.
Well, could, could we bring that rejected policy at our November fourth meeting? Because it sounds like it's going to make it easier for you and more efficient. That seems to be the way to go. And to Lance's point about people being angry with administration, one of my suggestions for the form was maybe changing from WSA school district to WSA Board of Education. But then if it's going to be a policy, we don't need to make that, so never mind.
Right.
It's not going to come back now.
Meantime, the application looks good.
Yeah, I think both to what the board had wanted.
And it was a fast turnaround, so thank you.
I think the number two in the top numbered section is kind of awkward about the agreement being valid for two years. However, the WSA school district can terminate it. I think it would be better if the agreement would be reviewed annually or every other year and the board can step back anytime. I just saying it's valid for two years and then saying, but we can decide it's not seems.
Well, there could be extenuating circumstances.
If numbers drop or the other, if the other team, you know, something goes on with the.
Exactly.
I guess that's saying that they don't have to reapply every year.
Yeah. Well, that's why I'm saying if we just worded that we would review it whatever timeline we wanted. It's just, I just have a problem with telling somebody something's valid and then we say something comes up, so now it's not valid.
But we actually changed that. Remember that was the one where we talked about extenuating circumstances was in there. We just didn't like that idea of what's extenuating circumstances, so we just took that out and ended it with, you can end it at any time.
The attorneys ran our head.
I think the district having the power to terminate it at any time is, is fine. It's just a little bit confusing, like Jane said, when you say that there's a valid agreement because there isn't really.
You want, should we just take that part out?
So it could be terminated at any time, even just throughout the season?
Yeah, something would, I mean, I could see that. If their numbers drop and all of a sudden, you know, we're just going to terminate it because you're not sending us any kids anymore.
It's not working. Or our numbers drop and it's only kids from another school.
Right, right.
I think it's good to have the disclaimer, absolutely. Maybe we just don't need the first part.
See, I think, and I think Brian took that from the WIA, that agreement is valid for two years because normally when you schedule, you're scheduling and all of a sudden it's going to be evaluated.
Do, do you want the form, do you want us to approve the form with that change so that you can make use of it now even though we're going to be developing a policy? Because I think it looks fine.
People will.
Okay.
So that would be great. I'll, yeah, I will leave that section. I appreciate that.
All right, then I'm seeking a motion to approve the application for the cooperative sponsorship of existing clubs with a minor modification.
So move.
All in favor? I opposed. Abstentions? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda. We are at professional learning, leading and service guidelines. And this will be Dr. Hiltz and Chris Simon presenting.
Evening. Well, a number of people have been working on this, but I'm, I'm pleased to be sharing this with you finally. We've been talking about this for a number of months and happy to be sharing the, the work we've done to create this process that we hope's really going to kind of celebrate and support the learning leadership service of our certified staff, create some equitable and manageable expectations, really recognize individual learning and really, and support the whole childhood WSA strategic plan moving forward. So you can certainly read that. What I've, what we have in mind, what we have in terms of a vision for this is individuals and teams of certified staff really working to talk about what do they need individually and as a team to meet their own learning needs, how they can best support building and district goals, either through service or leadership. And that conversation occurring with their supervisor simultaneously with our current process, which is our SLO and PPG development process that happens, sorry, student learning objective and the, and the professional performance goal. Those conversations happen typically most intensely over the fall. And this conversation about the learning leadership and service piece would happen simultaneously and with the same parties involved. So that's the, the vision. The way it works, fairly simple. We would expect each certified staff member to complete three learning service and/or leadership activities. No points, no hour, no time requirements, which is always a double edged sword, right? It adds flexibility, it adds personalization, also opens up the possibility of some potential inequities. In other words, you know, if Tricia's working three times harder than I am at her learning, but my learning's been approved and it's, you know, there, there is that. And we're working with staff and the administrative team right now to try and find some, some balances to that. We'll back that up one more. Sorry. I don't know who's in charge of this thing. Oh, okay, thank you. So the, oh yeah, so it could be a combination of, of any of the three. We would require everyone to do at least one learning activity. You know, that individual learning piece is critical for a learning, learning organization. We want that to, to be a part of it. And, oh, and then the bottom two bullets are really about that, that process, that review and approval process. Chris did some really, in my mind, exciting research, found a really nice support system for this process. So Chris, if you want to speak to that?
Sure. So Keith kind of highlighted what is now part of the teacher evaluation process. And one of the additional goals in terms of the development of this process or this program has been to create alignment between the teacher evaluation process, which certainly is focused on and centered on improving teacher effectiveness and so in an effort to kind of streamline that work, we really were focused on how can we maybe create some additional efficiencies in terms of where folks are signing up for and registering for professional learning, how they're engaging in conversations with their evaluator around what they want to do based on their changes and needs over time to grow and improve as a professional. So knowing that we house all of the evaluation materials now, the SLO and PPG on an annual basis in My Learning Plan, which is a software solution that's owned by Frontline. Frontline also offers a professional learning management tool, which will allow for us to log the learning, leadership and service activities each year. And we'll have the opportunity for that to become kind of a more comprehensive evaluation process that really does allow for evaluators to be very involved in conversations and discussions about where teachers would like to grow and improve as a result of their own self-evaluation and reflection. But also that will be a result of announced and unannounced observations that evaluators do as part of the evaluation process on an annual basis. So it really does create, it creates, it makes actually our evaluation process even more comprehensive and more robust than what we currently have because it allows some alignment between teachers identifying what their professional needs are for learning and where they would like to learn and grow. So the, the solution that we've identified, and actually I was just on a planning call today in terms of laying out what the implementation process would, would look like for that professional learning management side. So that will require some farming out of data that we have, five years of historical data that we have out of Edgiforia. That's a software solution now where we currently house all of our professional learning catalog and also all of our certified staff members have their professional learning portfolios housed there. So we'll be extracting all of the information from Edgiforia, getting that into Frontline. So in addition to having a fresh start next fall with leading, leadership, learning and service as required activities for all staff members, we'll also have a historical perspective in terms of the work that they've completed as part of the current four tiered model that we've lived in.
The bottom two bullets are really kind of disclaimers, just kind of saying, hey, this is what this is all about and these two bottom points are what it's not about, right? I mean, community service is great, but we really want to focus in on our internal work. And even the wonderful learning happens in our professional learning, learning days like, such as what we had last Thursday and Friday. Again, this is more individualized and, and team oriented rather than, than the district organized learning opportunities.
So what is the impact on our teachers' time? When, when are these happening? This isn't happening during professional learning days? So, you know, when you have this requirement of three things a year, one of them being a learning requirement, that can vary dramatically in hours.
Yep.
And I'm really worried about our teachers when, you know, they're still doing lesson plans the night before and they're answering parent email. and they're answering parent emails and calls and, um, you know, worrying about how they can manage this conflict with this student and this student. And then to put, I'm just really concerned about their time and how is this affecting it? What's the impact?
And of course, it depends on what, you know, the individual or the team would select. These can be done during the day. You know, we've had a number of conversations with staff in all sorts of, you know, personal and professional situations. You know, so for, you know, and just as, as one illustration, uh, spoke with a wonderful teacher a couple of weeks ago who has not been able to engage in the, the current compensation model due to, you know, family obligations at home. So, so this could be something as simple as, you know, a workshop during the day. If they go to a CISA workshop, that can be the learning piece. So it's during the day, um, you know, built into the budget. Doesn't matter if we pay for it, if they get paid for it, none of that really matters. What we're interested in is the learning, you know, the, the leadership or service opportunities. Could be the same, you know, they could be, uh, you know, a, a team leader, right? That's a leadership opportunity. So we're making it flexible enough that it should have, at their choice, right? A minimal impact on their, on their work-life balance that we've also been having conversations about.
Is this meant to replace the, the professional learning time that teachers are currently spending?
Yes.
Because you at one time had mentioned something about 20 hours.
Yes.
Is that this?
Yes, this is it.
At one time 40.
Yeah.
We had talked about a couple different numbers.
Yeah, we had talked about 40 hours. I'm glad you brought that up, Lance. We, uh, the next slide as a matter of fact is, is how this thing was, how this process was developed. And we had a number of conversations about time requirements, right? Or points or something like that. And, and through the conversation, you know, we, we came to the realization that, you know, some people can and will do more and some people can't and won't, right? Or just aren't able to. And so we, we, we would like to, um, try this without time and, and point requirements. Matter of fact, something I failed to mention is that you, you might notice the, the name of this changed to version 1.0, because we anticipate this is going to modify as we learn to use it as people, as we get feedback. We're, we're, we're kind of building in the expectation that this is going to modify to meet staff needs and district needs.
It's like, there's nothing in there that sounds like I would vote against it, but I'm struggling to know what I would be voting for though. Am I voting in favor of requiring our teachers to do three activities that take an hour each? Or am I voting in favor of requiring our teachers to do three activities that take 20 hours each?
Right. And it's up to the same, it's, it, you know, what I've, the, the principals and the staff have been asking those same questions. As a principal, what am I approving and what is the principal next door, you know, approving? As a teacher, what is my principal going to approve? And, um, you know, so we've been having, you know, those conversations. And keep in mind too, what I have to keep reminding myself of is this is a, the, the minimum requirement, right? So someone, um, and frankly, we, we can bring you some more examples if that's going to help. And I'm sensing that it might, yeah. Because we've talked about, for instance, you know, what if someone, um, you know, chooses to, you know, to get paid to do a one day, what was the example, like a track meet, right? They're going to go and work a track meet. You know, that is service, we need them to do that. That's service. Is one day a year, is that enough, right? You know, and does it matter if it's on a weekend or, you know, whatever? We talked about what if someone takes a one credit class, like a one credit, credit graduate level class? Clearly that's a viable learning opportunity. What if they take a three credit class? Does that count for three? So those are the kinds of conversations we're fleshing out.
I think the fairness is going to be really tricky here. But I'm also thinking about, um, could a group like a PLC or a grade level team decide that they were going to have a goal that they all wanted to meet to further their professional development and work on that together during their planning time during the day that they already have built in?
So I think the answer to that question is our intent really is to very much empower and involve the evaluators and the principals and the APs and those conversations and those discussions. And if indeed there is an identified need or interest from that group of people to grow professionally in that way, that that certainly could be logged as a learning activity for that particular group of people in a given year.
So what you really want them to do is not just count hours, but look at what their real growth needs are, either for a small group of people or for individuals, and go after those.
I think there needs to be an understanding that with this process, and I frankly, I deal with this during the day, there's inherent ambiguity with this depending on the individuals. Professional development of professional people varies by individual. I have people that go to a conference for five days, come back and do a PowerPoint presentation to my entire staff on what they learned. I also have somebody that will go take an online course in conflict management. It's still accomplishing something, it's accomplishing something for that individual. And the next year, it may be reversed. Trying to fit everybody into a box where everything is perfectly equal, I, I think is an exercise in fertility.
And if I could, if I could just illustrate your points with, you know, we talked about the fact that someone could go to a one, two, three day workshop and it has minimal impact potentially on their practice. Or someone could do a very specific, strategic, um, you know, an online certification that takes a couple of hours, but they, they, they really implement it to a pretty deep level, you know, throughout a school year. So we talked about, well, do we, talk about the outcome of these activities? Very difficult to measure. So that's, that, that's that ambiguity.
The central difference here is that the staff members are making their own decisions about what they need instead of taking an academy because it fits their time, which they don't even feel that they do.
But it's still subject to approval from the building administrator. So you can't have a situation where one principal says volunteering one day at the track meet meets your service requirement and another principal that says you need to volunteer be assistant coach for the whole season to meet your service requirement. So how's that?
You guys are going to be meeting a lot to talk about what the...
We've, we've already had several meetings about that. You know, one thing that, that, you know, I want to keep in mind too, is that we currently have a, a system that's embedded within the teacher evaluation process where a teacher has to propose their SLO and their PPG. Not a lot of, there is ambiguity built into it. It is approved by their principal. There was training several years ago, you know, when it was new, but really since then, it's been, and maybe you could probably help me understand, you know, how much training do we give to, to new staff? And to new principals for that matter, but that process has been going pretty well. Very few conflicts unless, unless something's happened that I don't know about. But very few conflicts, um, even with, with the minimal guideline.
And even, and for Keith to speak to what training has occurred, so all new staff as part of mentoring and induction, which is a two or three year program, um, here in our district, the formal mentoring program, they spend most of the entire first year focusing on understanding the 22 components of Charles Danielson's framework for teaching and the development of high quality SLOs and PPGs.
So I'm presuming that the principals are already talking with their staffs and the principals are already talking through your guidance about this as well. So you, you are fleshing all of this out.
Somewhat. I don't, we have not directed them to have conversations with their staff, because frankly, we're still trying to clarify some of, some of these.
So in, in my profession, ambiguity is fatal. I, I have a real problem, um, being able to approve anything where we just go based off of three events, three things through the year. Because I know sitting here as a board member, I can anticipate getting calls, um, down the road about this is what it looked like for this particular teacher and then pointing the finger up, but look at what this teacher got and the inequity that can arise. So without some more specificity, understanding you still need that flexibility, but just saying, just going off of the three, that is problematic for me.
Yeah, that's where I'm at too. If you, if, if the request today, sometimes you come and you kind of just want like a head nod. Are we kind of on the right track? Are we going in the right direction? I'm nodding my head. It sounds like you're going in the right direction, but I wouldn't know what I was actually voting on in terms of an action item. I'm not, what, what am I approving?
Right, right. And, and it really is a, a requirement that they, that they engage in three activities per year. And we do, we have a, we have a whole grid of, of potential activities.
That's what we need to see.
Yeah. And you saw some of those last spring, but we've expanded it and we've contracted it and we've, yeah, we've, we've done a lot of work with that and that probably would have been a good, uh, attachment for this. So we can certainly clean that up and, and get that to you.
What we'd be approving essentially is the underlying principles, not anything much more specific than that. And we do that kind of thing all the time. And in fact, often, you know, what we do at higher ed is teach people to embrace ambiguity, as a matter of fact, and know that there's things that you're not going to ever nail down if you're going to leave room for innovation.
Right, but I wouldn't approve it if, to use my extreme example again, I wouldn't approve the concept if the concept allowed one building principal to require 40 hours of leadership and the other to allow it one hour. That, like, I wouldn't approve a concept that allows that to happen.
Yeah, the first thing that's going to happen with those emails coming in, they're still going to be sent to Keith and he's going to have to deal with all of them. And so he's not off the hook. So he's going to have to deal with the fact that there's going to be disagreements and he's going to have to rectify those.
So I think it was intended to, yes, approve the concept with the idea that when we met with the administrative team last month and we proposed some scenarios to them in terms of, okay, because really the, they're going to be the ones making the decision. So say one, say we all in that room of all 45 of us, we need to come to some common understandings around what is equitable and what still allows for there to be some degree of flexibility in terms of allowing, allowing certified staff members to kind of guide and create their own learning path. So I think when we go back to them now and we're together in November, the idea is bring that grid back to them with the examples that we've added to, deleted, added to again, deleted from. And then say, can we all say, say one, say we all, that no one's going to be agreeing that a one hour service requirement equates to someone else's 40 hour service requirement.
Like, I wouldn't need to see a list, and I wouldn't expect you to have a list that says, this is it. Hey, you have to pick from this, because that's not what this is. But it would be very helpful for me to see some examples of this is the type of thing that would, that would satisfy the learning requirement. And then, you know, you could branch off from that, but if you have an example of this kind of thing is what we're thinking of, um, that would be helpful for me.
The only thing I would remind us, and I, I don't disagree with that, I guess the only thing I would remind everybody is that we're coming off of a compensation model that was inadvertently over architected, right? So I think that, that hopefully our tendency is going to be to simplify some of this stuff. Yeah, and allow for the fatal ambiguity perhaps, but I, I appreciate that.
So would we be approving the continuation of working on this versus approving you and I?
And I don't think, that's what I think, we don't need to have a motion tonight if, if there's going to be a little bit more work that you can come back with, just something a little more concrete, but still allowing for the flexibility.
I think there would be some value in keeping track of what each principal approves and reviewing that after a year or after a period of time and see if, see what kind of consistency you have. And if, if someone is just sliding stuff off, right? Then we don't, we'd have a, maybe get a handle on it.
And that is something that the My Learning Plan process, that format would allow us to do.
Management tool would house all of that.
So the, so the, the motion as, as recommended is to approve the implementation of, if the motion were to continue working on it, then we don't need a motion. Right? So, so approve the implementation of what would that, if we, if we did a motion and did that at this point, what does that do for you?
It would, it would say that the board supports the, the idea that, well, the requirement that next, starting next year, each certified staff member would be required to complete three activities, you know, that, uh, in, in one of those three areas.
Okay. And if enough members of the board would like to see something a little more before that point, what does that do to your timetable?
Part of the reason we wanted to bring it today, well, in, in, you know, at this point in the year is as people start to make budget requests and they know that they have to, you know, maybe, you know, find some workshops, whatnot, that, that it could influence budget development. Budget requests are due back, I think, early December. Now, I don't know if, if this is agreeable to the board. You know, you could move, obviously, you know, approving it tonight is just moving it forward to the board meeting. It's not, it's not approving it. If you're, uh, if you'd be comfortable doing that, and we could clean up that grid, email it to you and then certainly attach it also to the next agenda.
So does it have to actually have a motion tonight though, or can it go to the next agenda?
It'll be on the agenda for the regular meeting, no matter what we do tonight, it just won't come with approval. And I, I can't approve a motion that in effect requires our teachers to do three activities without having any idea what those activities are. I mean, am I approving 100 hours or am I approving 10 hours? I don't, at this point, I don't know.
We can't excuse our teacher's time.
Yeah, and some, my problem with this is we're going to require them to do three things. And it just rings to me somehow that sometimes this is going to be busy work because they have to get those three things in. I want teachers to do things that are going to make them better teachers, help them in their classrooms. And it might take one teacher an hour to do each one of these things and it will improve them in their classroom. And it might take another one 20 hours to do things to improve them in their classroom. And I just, uh...
So it sounds like we need more. Some people want more specifics. They want the grid cleaned up.
We can put it on the regular November agenda meeting, so we're moving forward, but just not voting on it tonight. We don't need to do that. So we'll have more information fleshed out.
Just so I'm clear though, in terms of the grid, because I know and I've looked at it lots and lots and lots of times. There isn't, so we can, what the grid will include, and just to be sure that this gives you what you're looking for, it includes a host of examples of activities that someone might do that the leadership team, our administrative team have said, this would meet what I believe is significant enough to be considered a, a service activity for a certified staff member. But there isn't necessarily an hour attachment on any one of those. So is that enough? Because otherwise we'll have to go, because otherwise I think I don't know that we can have it until after. I don't know if we can have that level of specificity included on the grid until after we meet with the administrative team again. So it would be, if you're asking for examples that include specific hour requirements, I don't, we don't have that.
Which frankly, we don't, I don't want.
Right, you're trying to get away from that. No, I don't, no, I don't think, no, I don't think you need that. I think just seeing the list of activities would be very helpful, because I'm not comfortable voting in favor of requiring three activities without having any examples of ideas of what those activities are.
So they don't have to be enumerated in the number of hours, but there's got to be some sense of scale.
And that exists, because that's easy.
Yeah, you're engaging in a, in a conversation we've been engaged in for many, many weeks.
If you say, take a class, you're not going to maybe not put a number of hours on there, but there has to be some understanding that taking a one hour class online versus taking a full credit, all your, you know, you're both taking a class, but there's got to be some kind of guideline that you have for your principals.
Yeah. And keep in mind too, that, you know, so for instance, Tricia, you had talked of, you know, one example you had shared is, um, you know, coaching, right? So coaching is a really, is a very important service to our kids in our district. A head coach puts in a lot more time than a JV or a freshman level, you know, assistant coach, but they also get compensated for that, right? So, so we've got that, um, complexity to add into it, or that consideration. You know, some people choose to do it because they love it and they get paid for it. Others are, others are not. So I'll just, so that, that's part of the conversation too. But we can certainly create, you know, clean up the grid, no time requirements. You'll have some questions, right? And, and you'll engage in that conversation a little bit, yeah.
So, okay, um, just two things. So as to the comment that some of these things can happen during the daytime, well, presumably that's during the daytime when the teachers would be doing other prep, right? So it's just, it's not really taking away from their, it's not really helping them. They would be doing their work otherwise, so they're just going to do that work later.
Potentially, sure.
Okay. And then as far as I can hear loud and clear, the desire to stay away from time, looking at outcomes, but is there some, some... but is there some, some assurance that, you know, we don't, this is not gonna be somebody coming at the end of, what will it be, 20, 21, saying I had to do 120 hours to meet my three? I mean, do we know, like, it went at X amount of time, that's just too much. That's, you met your, your time.
A head coach puts in how many hours? You know, I, I keep going to that example because it's the most obvious, it's one we can.
I mean, I guess then some of these specific items will be helpful then, because.
Yeah.
Okay.
One credit hour course, it could be 60 hours of work.
Right.
Depends on the course.
Depends on the course.
Good course, it should be 35 hours.
How much someone invests into the process. All right.
Okay, so, um, thank you, Chris and Dr. Hiltz. We'll look forward to seeing that at the regular meeting. And now I am seeking a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.